I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, a moment of silence where everyone being affected by this epidemic that's going around the world. All right, thank you. Have a seat. Roll call.
Karlovic?
Here.
Reichner?
Here.
Reese?
Down there.
Sorry, Reese. Ister? Brochus?
Here.
All right. First tip.
All right, so we have a proclamation for Women's History Month. Whereas women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas women have been our leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolishment movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements. Especially the peace movement, which created a more fair and just society for all. And whereas women are able to pursue a formal education, start a business, serve in the military, raise a family, or run for elected office. Whereas this month, we celebrate countless pioneering women and the victories they've won. And continue our work to build a society where our daughters have the same possibilities as our sons. And now therefore, we resolve that Mayor Kurt Karlovic, being Mayor of the city of Sunbury, County of North Cumberland, Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, on behalf of the City of Sunbury Council members and citizens, do hereby declare the month of March 2020 as Women's History Month. Is there any audience comment on agenda items only at this time?
We have a special presentation for the United Way.
Sorry?
There's no... Okay. The United Way? My presentation's a little long, so I'll just cut to... I'll skip through some of this stuff.
Where is it?
Uh, it should be right. I hope we get pumped up, yeah.
There it is.
It's called shave a haircut. Leave me alone. You're gonna wait a while. I'll show them what's going on.
Yeah, sorry.
All right, that's fine. Hi guys, my name's Seth Joseph. I'm the Director of Development and Marketing at the Greater Susquehanna Valley United Way. So we cover... Oh, maybe a lot of there. So we cover Snyder Union and North Cumberland Counties. Just want to talk to you a little bit about the United Way, what's going on, what events we have coming up. Talk a little bit about our campaign. And then I'll, hopefully I can leave some campaign materials maybe at the back for folks to pick up if they'd like to. So just want to talk a little bit about what the United Way is, kind of how we've transformed over the last couple of years. So the United Way used to be known as the treasure chest model of the United Way, where folks donate to the United Way, and then we just redistribute it out to smaller nonprofits in the area. And we still do that. But what we're really inclined to doing over the past couple of years is a model called the collective impact model. So that's where we work closer together with our community partners in the area. The different libraries, different early childhood education programs, to really address the root cause of issues. And you know, work together in that collective impact mindset. So we focus on five different main vocal areas. Basic needs. We have different programs within the United Way that help folks who are struggling to meet ends meet. We have a car loan program, where people can, you know, apply to get a low-interest car loan. Someone who's struggling to get to work, we pair them up, they can get a car and get them to work. We have gap fundings to support people who are, you know, struggling to meet ends meet as well. We have various programs within early childhood education. We just expanded our after-school programs to include all of Shakilimi Elementary Schools. We have a couple of different programs with behavioral health and addiction. We just got through the county. We were... The county was one of 21, I believe, one of 21 or one of 20 counties to receive a federal opioid grant. So we're in the planning phases of that, and that's going to be rolled out in June. A couple of events coming up. We have our Day of Action, which Mayor Kurt is going to be on the radio for. So we're having a day, a day-long, where community members, businesses are volunteering. That's going to be on April, Friday, Friday, April 24th. We have a human library event, where we're bringing folks in from different backgrounds to talk about their experiences. So people from diverse backgrounds talking about things that they've experienced. And we're bringing in community members to, you know, understand different perspectives of the community. And then on June 6th, we have our Live United Live Music Concert. So a lot of big-name bands from the 80s that I don't know. Dokken, Warren, April Wine, Firehouse. Anyone know these?
Yes.
Okay. I've never heard of them, but apparently they're good for you. It's gonna be, yes, I'm too young, but...
Try YouTube.
Yeah. It's gonna be a good event. It's at Spyglass. Tickets are on our website. It's gonna be a really good event, and that's coming in June. That's pretty much all I have about the United Way. One cool thing about the United Way pledge process is you can donate to whatever nonprofit you want to through the United Way. So if you want to donate to your Little League, or you want to donate to your church, or to your local library, you can do that through the United Way. You just have to indicate it on your pledge form. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Make the motion to approve the minutes of February 10th and February 24th, and reports of fire department, treasurer, engineer, and code office. Do I have a second?
Reichner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Ister?
All right, the Sunbury Wetland property. So right now, I'm titling the Sunbury Wetlands as the Sunbury Wetlands Ecological and Educational Park, or SWEET for short. I have been in discussions with MEC Tech Incorporated over in Shamook and Dam on the strip. Last year, they did survey the property, all the property boundaries of that parcel as well. There are many reasons why parks are important to a community. They help with community revitalization, economic development, create community engagement. They help children learn, promotes public health, promotes the arts and cultural programs. It also helps to bring tourism to the area and helps to create actually safer neighborhoods. I have read that parks and other urban green spaces help prevent violence in their communities. When vacant lots and deteriorating urban spaces are transformed into more appealing and useful places for the residents, violence and crime typically decline in the immediate vicinity. Parks also give people a place to participate in outdoor activities together while promoting positive social interactions and neighborly connections within diverse urban communities. According to the Environmental Protection Agency, wetlands provide recreational, educational, and research opportunities. And nature-related recreation is the fastest-growing activity of the tourism industry. MEC Tech has given us a proposal of an estimate of $7,500. That $7,500 will give us everything that we need in order to apply for the large mega grants for this type of project, such as DCNR, which their grant cycle opens, I believe, on this January coming, and then it closes, I believe, in April. So that gives us plenty of time this year to get the feasibility study accomplished. This feasibility study consists of a site review and the feasibility, conceptual plans of it, and coordination between the grant employee and so forth. The project's going to consist of overlooks, a wetland bridge, wetland walks, nature trails, multiple signages, educational signages. The railroad bed is going to have a trail with educational signage. There's going to be parking, additional parking on there, lighting, adequate lighting for the property. Electric is going to be there as well, water, hookup, and we're going to have security measures on that property as well. So I do have a line item that I budgeted $10,000 for, knowing I wanted to pursue this project this year. So I'm making a motion to take $7,500 and begin this feasibility of the wetland property for Sunbury. Do I have a second?
Second question. Only recommendation on my make. Breann, I know through the years, your late father was involved in projects there. Susquehanna was involved, the high school was involved, Psycho Foundation involved. I think you should go back and collect all that information. There have been so many studies. There's been plans. There was going to be an education, a building that's supposed to be built on there. And get that to give to your...
Well, they have everything, every piece of information that I could obtain on my own, my own city.
Mayor, I think that's helpful as you're giving the information for us. I do have files from file on some of the projects and that, and I'm happy to help with that.
Okay.
I just, there's a lot of information out there for you.
Okay.
Do we have a motion in a second? Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Kurt? Excuse me, where exactly is this property?
Between North 6th and 8th and Race and Lion Street.
Oh, this is the original property where you wanted to do a dog park?
It wasn't originally supposed to be a dog park. It was a nature park that had a corner that was going to be allotted for a dog park.
Gotcha. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Brochus, your street closures?
Street closures, more coming up this year. First one is spreading antlers, Easter egg hunt on April 11th. The East End's Fire Company Anniversary Celebration on May 30th. Sunbury, excuse me, Sunbury Fire Department Memorial/Polite on October 11th. Sunbury Fire Police Halloween Parade on October 15th. I make the motion to close those roads for the following Princeton Sunburies.
Second, Ed.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Ms. Ockert, request to use...
Yes. So there's been a request from the Shakilimi School Board to use parking lot number two for parking exclusively for parking for the prom on May 2nd.
I make a motion as such?
Second.
Okay.
Under question, is that the lot behind you, Ockert?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
And then the next is a resolution for open container and noise waivers for Memorial Day, State Farm Memorial Day barbecue. And Cameron Park, May 16th, from 2:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Is that free?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I'll make that motion.
What page is that?
Second, Ed, motion.
Okay. All right, Karlovic?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Reese? Thank you. And Brochus?
Yes.
Okay, employee health benefits. The city has been, I forgot to put the number of years, but the city has been enrolled in BeneFon Health Benefit System for some time. There's interest in consideration of other health benefit plans to ensure best value for cost. And that, and in order to explore this option, BeneFon requires, contract requires notification of them, of our intent to withdraw six months ahead of the end of the contract, which would be December 31st. The city is not obligated to withdraw at that time. It doesn't lock us into withdrawing. It's just that if we found a health benefit plan that we wanted instead of them, this notification would have had to be made. So this is just to put that out there in advance. Give us the right to shock around.
So is December 31st the end of the contract, or the date that we have to notify them by?
June 1st is the date we have to notify them by. And December 31st is the end of the contract. Motion?
Yeah, motion done.
Reichner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
All right, we've had some requests come to my office for me, some of our unnamed alleys. Give me a moment here, I'll bring up a special slide or special look here on the screen or the wall. The first one is a request to name this alley between Third and Fourth and Walnut and Spruce. See it there, highlighted in yellow. And to name it Luther's Alley, name of a gentleman that has a home and business there. Older gentleman, I understand he walks to the Americas to have his breakfast.
Oh, he drives.
He drives.
Or drives, sorry. So there's one. The next one, I have to pull disclosure, I put in this request. This is the alley behind the home where I live, between Alice and Julia, between Front and Fort Augusta Avenue. This whole area of town is called Cape Town. And I'd like to have it named in honor of...
Mr. Kate.
Mr. Kate, James. It's either John or James.
John.
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 So it's, and I'd like to name it Kate Walk, just because it's a fun play on words. But if you would rather name it Cape Town Alley or something else, that's okay, but... Next. And this was a request I received actually a couple of months ago, but I thought I'd put it in there. I was just kind of hanging on my to-do list. An alley there between Greeno and Packer, Champ Avenue and Cadwalader Avenue. The suggestion was Nye Alley for a gentleman that has lived there for a very long time.
Did you review, so when we did this, I find first started streets, there was a list of people that we were keeping that had submitted. Because there's definitely one or two that I had gotten since then that are not on there. That I, I don't know where they're stored, but I remember Terry had them, but then would have passed them to Joel there. There was probably two or three more on there. But we can do these for now, but then just revisit.
Either that, or if you want me to get the other ones first, to make sure there isn't any conflicts?
Those I don't remember being on there, especially not those names in those alleys.
Okay.
But yeah, I didn't want to review what I got that, but I remember there was a couple of that. I was looking quick. I got messages around them. I looked at.
Okay.
Not a good name.
So make motion to accept these names of these alleys?
Second.
Ister? Brochus?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Next on the agenda?
Windows 7?
Uh, the Windows 7, yes, I'm sorry, I did skip that one. I'm not ready to bring that. I, there's a discrepancy in the inventory of computers that need to have the Windows 7 upgrade, but I will have it in two weeks' time, and I'll have the actual quotes then for replacement.
Okay.
With the alley, okay, Sunbury Cleanup. This is our annual partnership with Sunbury Municipal Authority. This year, slightly different, still, there will be four different days, the 12th and 14th of May, the 19th and 21st of May. And instead of starting first thing in the morning in order to allow the garbage trucks to get in and get out, and not have to deal with people bringing their trailers of stuff in, they propose the times to be 12:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. each day. I'm sure you're all familiar with how this works, that the city provides manpower during those hours and also shares the transfer station cost. So at least this year, there'll be a fewer hours that we need to provide people, but...
I'm sorry, what were the dates again?
They're a cardinal.
Oh, duh.
So, nobody's been voting on this, but...
Is it?
Yeah. Never voted on this before.
I think we did refer to the manpower for last year.
Yeah, we did, yeah, I think we did do it on it last year. And, and the municipal authority said if we have any issue with the dates or the, or the times, that you can kind of provide your alternative suggestions.
Oh, gosh, how much manpower is required for our end?
So usually they go in two-hour increments of time, and so, yeah, their duty time or their, their working time, two hours of it out of that day.
But how many, like, but how many?
Two, I think it was two people per two-hour time period.
I think, Steven, your department, Mikey just likes to go all day.
Yeah, it pretty much, Mikey goes down, and there's not much more than Mikey's needed down there for that. When he means more, Mike calls, you know, sends more down, but, no, Mikey's our resident...
Mike, you guys go two as well, right?
Yeah, we have people who go, just go. I went down and took a turn for a couple of hours.
I volunteered last year for a couple hours.
The other thing is, I don't think we went past 4:00.
No, they did go into the evening, we just maybe didn't have... Yeah.
No, I'm not saying that they didn't have the hours.
You're saying our manpower?
Our manpower didn't go past 4:00.
Yeah, I think we did. And I think I volunteered for some of those evening times, just so that the employees didn't have to stay in the evenings, but, that's all, kind of. We, we tried to coordinate a schedule and get volunteers.
Second.
Okay, Brochus?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Ister? Okay, next is the tax exoneration.
There are 13 requests for tax exoneration, total $1,744.63. Seven of them are deceased, two are non-residents, and four are receiving SSI. I'm trying to make a motion that would be drawn by Rick.
Okay, Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
And the next is the vouchers or invoices payable?
There's a, um, there's a total in the general fund of $82,069.98. And liquid fuels of $31.26. I'm making motion that those bills be paid. Sorry.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Reichner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Okay. Next, we have the unfinished business. This is the request for proposal for auditors. Um, we see proposals from four different firms. I've summarized the firm name and then the proposal, proposed cost for each of the audit years 2019, 2020, and 2021. I had in mind that we establish a committee to evaluate the proposals, interview the firms, and bring a recommendation to council March 23rd. Some treasurer troop, do you have input or another suggestion?
It's usually costing us about $25,000 a year to get this done through... We're marching in Calhoun right now. What we like to do is try to get away from people who do taxes. Because it just tax takes due from April 15th to June 15th. April 15th for businesses, June 15th for nonprofits, organizations, stuff like that. So what's happening every year, we're getting late after, there's supposed to be a report filed with the government, a CTE report on September 30th. In the last three years, it's been late. And that goes like against us, and we like to try to stop that, try to get somebody who just basically does audits for the municipalities and municipalities only. So it'll be, our attention will start like right now to the end of the year to get the audit done. Except waiting until June or July, like we have in these last couple of years. So which one does just audit? Um, it's going to be the Mahler and Dusel, not Harrisburg. They do nothing but their spot. What's the disadvantage to us being late? Is there a fee charge? It goes to black market against us, and it goes in the clearinghouse.
Well, we don't know if these other ones that have tax services would be late, maybe they have the employees that would be priority for us, though.
It could be, it could not be, you don't know. They can tell you how far it might be, and then they might not be. But it's not enough. Well, the one case is here in the city. Is that it?
Yeah, Harry and Roll.
And that's cheapest? So it may be worth, at least it's boring that one, because I don't, I didn't see that.
Did the proposal include filing prior to the date you talked about, Kelly?
They're supposed to have it done by then, yes.
Yeah, what I'm saying, the proposal included that?
No, that, that is standing in a proposal. But you know, anybody who knows what to do with the audit, especially with municipalities, when it comes to federal grants and stuff like that, knows that this audit needs to be done by September 30th.
No, but did you put it in the request to propose?
Yeah, well, people we talked to, yeah, the people I talked to, yes.
Did you talk to Harry and Roll?
Is that the guy across the street?
That's the guy in front of the town.
No, I didn't talk, I did not talk to their folks. I talked to people from across the street. I don't see theirs up there.
Clisick and Associates?
I talked to, well, I said Calhoun, I talked to, um, Clisick Associates in Shamook. They were...
They're on Fish Street.
That's Clisick across...
Yeah, no, it's, it's Clisick on across the street.
Is it?
Yes.
Oh, I thought it was... Clisick's across the street.
No, they're, they have branches in Shamook and in it somewhere.
I have a subject story, let's say across the street.
Well, if I can enter real quick into the conversation, I can make a contract for any of them that says you don't get paid unless this is tendered on time.
And we're doing a one audit every year because of all the other money that we get.
So that would, I mean, it, does that serve?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's what changes a lot of the getting done, you know what I mean?
Yeah, and I understand what you're saying. I'm just saying, for purposes of allowing the council to move forward, if the council decides that they want to entertain whoever based upon their agreement in the contract to provide timely service, hopefully that would, you know, take care of your reservation.
We just don't like filing late.
No, no, I understand.
I don't see any reason we have to. We don't have to have the federal government send this nasty letter saying, I said I see you in Portland, you see me on time, you know what I mean? That's not good for us.
I get it.
So who did you have in mind regarding this committee?
Well, I put some suggestions up there, but I mean, that was just tentative, and certainly council can decide what you'd like to do.
Are those the only four that we applied?
Yes, those are the only four we received.
If we want to have that letter, the conditional letter in that thing.
It'll be a contract, right?
Or the contract, and I recommend we go with either the lowest or whatever, because they're both reasonably close. We could figure out what...
I think you might want to review their proposals. You might want to review their proposals, their experience, um...
I think we should just make a motion and go ahead with the administrator's recommendation. Let's have this committee and have a recommendation brought to us on March 23rd. That way Joel can get the letter prepared, that way they are under full understanding that this must be completed this year.
So, like, someone might walk away.
Would Joel be part of this interview?
Yeah, they should be part of that.
Sure. That, that's what I was thinking, well, honestly, somebody might walk away.
Do I have a second?
Which we don't want.
Okay, Reichner?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Brochus?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
All right, cable television, Ms. Ockert.
Right, so the cable franchise agreement with Service Electric Cable Vision was actually due for renewal January 1st. We received a draft of the, of an ordinance. They provided to us. We did a bit more research and digging, and some revisions were negotiated by the city solicitor, including a definition, updated definition of gross revenues, which is the portion which we calculate our income from this, and then also ensure that there are protections for consumers. We have gone back and forth with SECV and with our solicitor, and have come to an agreement of the parameters of the franchise agreement, and it's ready for signatures. And then there's a resolution to sign the cable franchise agreement.
So the only question I have, the other day, has somebody contacted the city regarding cable TV in the city?
Well, it was not cable TV specifically. It's, it is a company called Zeno Media that provides fiber optic network. And it is physical fiber optic lines that they intend to install throughout the city. And they do offer internet tele... to install throughout the city, and they do offer internet, telephone, and TV subscriptions. Um, actually, solicitor and I talked about this today, whether or not we have any ordinances in place that we could, um, use to, um, have a fees for right of way or permits, which we don't really have anything in place right now. And Joel can, I'm sorry.
No, let me tell you.
You're Mr. Wees.
The, what we talked about today is, Jody and I, that what we have to ensure is that for Zito, if they decide to come into the city, that they would have an agreement which is either no better and no worse than whatever we enter with Service Electric, so that there is not monopoly created or discriminatory action in sort. Um, Zito would have to live with whatever deal is given or entered with Service Electric. Um, and therefore they could certainly provide services, they could provide services at a lesser cost to citizens, okay, if they wanted to. But they would still be subject to the same percentage of cost of revenues that Service Electric would be.
I think that contract with Service Electric, they can't exclude anybody.
Right, correct, they cannot exclude anyone.
Okay, we have the right to bring them in.
Right, that's a monopoly, that, they can't do that.
That's why I was concerned about.
Right.
Did we get an idea based off of the changes of what did they change in revenue?
Not really, what, they couldn't really provide that to us because it hasn't happened yet, all right, so it's really, how should I say, projection only, but what we did was we ensured that the gross revenues are going to include everything that could possibly be a gross revenue. There was some question in the past as to whether we were getting paid for all portions of the gross revenue, and I'm not saying we weren't, and I'm not saying we were, there was just some question as to whether the franchise agreement that was entered defined gross revenues to the point that we knew we were getting what we were supposed to get, so that's basically what we had.
Great work.
Seven. Okay, uh, Reese?
Yeah.
Eisler?
Yes.
Brocius?
Yes.
Karlovic?
Yes.
Rechner?
Yes.
All right, so NEIC, um, or inspection consultants for the city, I had them go through the current police department building at four forty Market Street, they did provide us with their write-up. Uh, just review it real quick with y'all. The interior, um, consists of wall coverings or compromise are missing, plaster is cracked and missing, paint is flaking and chipped, which may be a possible hazard, uh, they recommend having the paint tested for lead. The floor coverings are torn, ripped, and in poor condition, the ceiling tiles are missing in certain areas. There's evidence in numerous areas of water leaking into the building, uh, there's water stains, paint flaking, plaster bumpy on the walls and ceilings, stairways do not have the proper grass pable handrails on both sides of the stairways, doors and trims are missing in certain rooms, doors located on stairs are not fire rated to protect the integrity of exiting stairway for egress, um, the stairway is not properly fire rated, mechanical systems, the electrical panel appears to be intact and in good working condition, however, there are numerous locations of non-metallic wiring exposed, which is a violation of the twenty fourteen N E C. Numerous outlets are overloaded due to the lack of outlets and lack of circuits to employee work areas. The plumbing, plumbing fixtures are antiquated, numerous fixtures are not working, including toilets, sinks, and faucets. The heating system, the HVAC system located on the first floor is a violation of the International Mechanic Code, I M C, it lacks proper air ducts and proper enclosures, the basement steam lines and boiler lines are covered in what appears to be a bit of asbestos. Uh, they recommend having an asbestos abatement of the property. Emergency fire alarms and smoke detection are non-existent in the building, uh, the few emergency lights installed within the building do not work, and the three-story fire escape on the outside of the building, used as a second means of egress, is, in such district area would have to be completely rebuilt. So that is a brief description of the current structure, which our police officers are working under.
I, I have a question, I'm not disproving any, saying that any of that stuff is wrong. My question is, I mean, we added up committee for the new department for the last two years, why did it take two years to finally get this and present it, like, shouldn't that have been done day one?
There was one done ten years.
There was one done ten years.
Nothing has changed positively that day.
Yeah, he just did an update as of now, I think, but when we were starting, we also didn't walk through all this stuff and see all this stuff as well, and it was presented back then, too.
And I think this, this was just a, this is just a backup so the public understands this is why we're moving forward with what we're trying to do, so they kind of have like, okay.
Oh, yeah, I guess I'm not disputing that, that was my question, why wouldn't it have been done sooner?
It's kind of a refresher, too, because of the grants we're gonna be trying to go for, too, and any kind of public funding we're getting, so.
But Josh, just remember, Josh, two thousand nine, matter of fact, you found the hundred and something billion dollars appropriated that was taken back because they were moving, we're still haven't moved. It wasn't, the building wasn't being looked at.
Yeah.
But, Mr. Mayor, if you want me to down this dirty model, I'll start tomorrow.
No, we just gotta get the ball rolling.
Okay, let's roll.
All right, um, Miss Hucker, this question comes to you.
Okay, so there's an update on our progress on completing the, the codification process of the overall entire review of City Code. Um, what happens is, just to review, we received editorial and legal analysis from General Code, that's the contractor that was, um, retained to do this project, um, and that editorial legal analysis comes back with, uh, a hundred and seventy-four decision forms, so what's, they review everything, and then they'll put questions to, to us as to what we want to do with these particular issues. It might be an update to a reference, it might be, um, some of those, uh, a standardization of penalties, um, it might be that a Pennsylvania law has changed, and we need to relook at how our ordinance comports with the, the Pennsylvania law. So, anyway, so that's what we start with. Um, we've nearly completed answering all those requirements, there's just a handful that are outstanding, and it's because we're pending some of the updates to some of the other, um, ordinances. So as I was talking about, there are minor revisions, those are the things like updating the references, standardizing penalties, updating terminology, um, and then there were certain areas in which there is a Pennsylvania law that is perfectly adequate and detailed enough that they're not adding anything to it by having our own ordinance, we'll just be enforcing the Pennsylvania law, so we can then, um, remove those sections of the code and defer to the Pennsylvania state law that for, that we will be enforcing. So, uh, there's like a hundred and fifty more of those particular kinds of small revisions. Um, then there are more major revisions, and this is a list, beginning list of the, um, chapters in the code that are, are being updated. Um, you can see there in the list, chapter eleven, fire department, uh, the summary municipal authority, shade trees, building construction, food handling establishments, noise, which is, all these are in progress, so you'll see that they're, the status of what they're, where they are in process. So, there are some of them where you can say that E C D is estimated completion date, um, and so when the next step says council review, estimated completion date for that review is March eleventh, that's because we're scheduling a work session for March eleventh of this week, if, if it goes in the paper tomorrow, and, um, and the council will be able to spend some time in reviewing these that are already, the revisions are pretty much draft complete. Other ones still have some work to do, that hoping to get those drafts complete by the end of this month, middle of next. Uh, so there's still, you know, a lot of work to do, and, um, these, these major revisions on existing code, they can be adopted with an overall adoption of the codification, but, um, in discussion with our solicitor, we really want to allow the public some time to look at these, because once we get this final draft of the code, and General Code sends us an overall codification adoption ordinance, there's gonna be a lot of material that you're gonna want to be able to review. So we will present these, similar to we do as we do new ordinances, with a, a first reading, and give you a chance to look at them before they go forward to General Code for the final draft of the codification. And then finally, we have some new ordinances, um, the planning commission ordinance needs to be written, uh, we do have a blighted property review committee ordinance that is, is written, is likely ready for a first reading after the council has an opportunity to review it later this week, uh, the commercial property ordinance, uh, which includes a section on vacant properties, and then, uh, a, a ordinance on special events, and the notice of agenda, which was presented as a first reading, um, at the last council meeting, so the second reading will be March twenty-third. Um, these new ordinances have to be adopted and codified separately from the codification process, um, and we need to do it prior to sending them in for the final draft, so that they can be included in the full codification. If they are not, they still have to be adopted and then codified after, after the fact. So there may be some, if we, if we find that we just can't get it done, um, in a timely manner, we may want to just proceed with the codification, keep working on those, and send them in later. But there, the, the commercial property one is, is, is very close to being done, and, um, there's a couple of other ones that are, I think, pretty close to being upgraded.
Be friends with you.
Yeah. That's where we are on that?
Okay.
Your end of my discussion on that. Then, um, the strategic management planning program, I'm happy to announce that D C E D approved our grant application, just refresh your memory, the strategic management planning program is the new name for what used to be called an early intervention program. Um, we've already, uh, we've already reviewed requests for proposal and have a consultant firm that we would like to engage with, so the next steps are to sign the grant award contract and, and satisfy that with, uh, D C E D, and then we'll be able to establish the contract with the consultant firm that will come and do this initial assessment, which would be an, an assessment of the city's financial standing and a protection, projection of that for the next five years, and also a, assessment of our operational efficiency, and, um, and then also providing us recommendations on how we might improve so that we can be most efficient and most effective with the resources that we have. Okay, I'm gonna try to go through these really quickly, um, I think that, um, that I think it's, it's good that I'm able, I, I want to be able to tell you what's going on throughout the operational side of the departments, so that, just for an awareness, so you don't think I'm just, you know, sitting by my hands and doing nothing, there's a lot going on in the city that we're, we're, we're tracking on and we're progressing toward. So, just the Department of Public Affairs, this would be the city administration office and a city clerk. Um, we're still working on a request for proposals for the police pension fund management, and we should receive those by the end of the month, and then there will be a process to review those. Um, event coordination, uh, National Night Out is planned, being planned for August fourth, and then music in the park, just note that it's fully booked, we have all of our musicians already booked and scheduled. Then there's human resource management, is part of what that office does, we're going through all the employee records, making sure that the, they are up to date, and that we have complete documentation of certificates or clearances that are required. There's a commercials driver's license clearinghouse that has newly been established, so if any of our, uh, employees have a commercial driver's license, we have to have an account set up, and we have to make sure that appropriate documentation is in there. Um, the FIA summer employment program, we're renewing our agreement with that, and we have to figure out the child safety clearance process, uh, the state does not do that clearance process for us, so we have to make sure we can do it in a timely manner, so that when they submit the application, we're gonna advise the applicants that they need to get started on their clearances, so that once they're hired, they're ready to go. Um, looking ahead, we have the swim lessons and looking forward to those FIA student employment applications. Um, this is the same, uh, Department of Public Affairs, but more what is on my plate right now, the codification is my highest priority, that, it's an unwieldy mess, and we're, we're nugging it down, and soon hopefully be able to, to finish that out. Part of that is the ordinance revisions, the new ordinances, and then also updating the fee schedule to go along with it. Um, interacting with the grant writer, establishing priorities and processes for grant writing with our new contractor. Events coordination, I just want to mention, uh, there'll be more to follow on this, but the women's crew, uh, competition or race for the Sketitas Cup is scheduled for April twenty-fifth, and it's Bucknell versus Eastern Michigan. Um, Mr. Kish, who is the coach for the Bucknell women's crew, uh, approached the city and wanted to have this event where it would, the race starts, starting line is at the Marina Point, and the finish line will be in front of our amphitheater, so we can have an event, they're gonna have an announcer, they're gonna have music, and hopefully this will be, uh, something that will grow, uh, into the future. And then over the summer, there's also a plan to have some events where they can introduce young people to, to rowing and generate interest in people being out there on the river. Hart and Heritage Festival is still in my mind, uh, we're meeting again, uh, later this month, but don't forget, our two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary is July of twenty-twenty-two. We recently did some laloxone, le, naloxone training for our city employees, if you don't know what that is, that's the, the drug that reverses the opioid effect, so somebody who is overdosed and is not breathing or not, uh, not conscious, the, that effect can be reversed with this drug. So our police, uh, chief arranged for this training, we expanded it not only for the police officers, but also for code enforcement, and for Parks and Rec, and for Public Works, because of their potential to find, find somebody or come in contact with a substance, uh, some of these white powder substances can be so strong that just getting, um, contact with it on your hands can put somebody in crisis. So, um, in addition to the training, they will, there will be kits that they'll be able to carry, uh, similar to a first aid kit in case that needs to be administered, and it's a, um, it's a nasal spray, so it's not needles and injections and anything. Um, also was approached by B B and T to, uh, for free, um, they're offering to provide an, a employee financial wellness, like a lunch and learn, and just give employees some tips on how to manage their household budgets, you know, budgets are tight, and , uh, some of our employees might appreciate that help, so it's just gonna be a free lunch and a little bit to learn about, and then tentatively that's scheduled for March twenty-seventh. These are the things that are going on with our community and economic development, still, um, engaged with the Sunbury Community Partnership Forum, Think Sunbury, that's gonna be our brand for development, and we've got the rights now, uh, officially signed that we can use that logo and that phrase. Um, some of the areas that we're focusing on is creating that sense of community, enhanced infrastructure downtown, um, which some of those new ordinances are gonna help us do. And then, um, a perception of safety in Sunbury, sometimes it's a, it's a reputation not deserved, uh, that Sunbury is not a safe place to be, and we need to turn that image around and kind of, you know, point out the good things that are going on in Sunbury. It's here Friday night downtown, place was buzzing, lots of people in at the Eclipse, lots of people over in Big Wiggins, people were saying how, how much they enjoy being down here, up at the Duck Inn and the Squeeze Inn and all that, lots of good press, lots of good things going on, and it's, and it's safe to be out and about. Um, education workforce, there's an action group on that, um, Dr. Bendel from the Shikleme, uh, High, Shikleme School District Superintendent, he heads up that action group, and so one of, some of his initiatives are telling our story from the Shikleme School District, promoting the positive things that are going on in the school district. We're also working on dual enrollment, so kids that are in high school can take, be duly enrolled with La Corona College, and at a very, uh, uh, lower cost than what they would normally be, be charged, they can earn college credits while they're still in high school, and just in planning for it for next year, they've been able to triple their capacity. So, they've got the capacity, some of the students may be not able to pay for those credits, and so we're also working on a, a scholarship fund that will help those students. In workforce development, they're looking for opportunities for internships, work experience, work study programs across any and all, uh, industries and businesses across town, um, and then with career link, uh, they have a program called Parent Pathways, and that's to educate parents about opportunities for their high school kids moving on after high school. That is tomorrow, March tenth. That's fun tech. Economic Development Action Group, uh, Chris Reese is heading that one up, and, uh, we were working on the Ridge Policy Group, uh, coming in and doing a seminar on the opportunity zone, that's been funded, and so we're gonna be proceeding through that, hopefully later on, late spring, that seminar should occur, and that's to educate people about how they can take advantage of it, uh, and invest in a property in a federal opportunity zone. Um, we've also been, uh, getting some contacts from, from different development consultants wanting to, uh, make contact with us, I really feel like there's a kind of a positive buzz out there, um, and so that's all to the good. I forgot to mention, uh, oh, no, I did, it's right here, Community Diversity and Inclusion Action Group, that's Seth Joseph, who was here earlier with the great, oh, there you are, you're here, she's, he's still here, with United Way, um, he's heading up that group, and he mentioned the Human Library, the Day of Action, and then maybe some more about Not in Our Town, Not in Our Valley, and then, uh, Mr. about Not in Our Town, Not in Our Valley, and then, uh, Mr. Pastor Mark Gittens, uh, is going to be doing through his church a program called Frontline Front Porch Initiative, and that's an anti-child abuse, abuse initiative, and another way for people to get to know their neighbors out on their front porches. So that's it, there's a lot going on. Habitat for Humanity approached us, their, uh, their mission has changed a little bit, I think you might be familiar with building houses from the ground up, they are now actually looking for houses that they can renovate, houses that they can acquire for, you know, less than thirty thousand dollars, and then do a complete renovation, and then, uh, with the help of, of family that's gonna move in there, it's not giving away a free house, it is teaching somebody how to be a homeowner, teaching them how to maintain their own home, and at the end of this project, they have a mortgage that they will have to pay on, uh, to, to keep the house, um, the odds of support along the way, so this is a, a great way for renters to become owners, and that's what we want in town, we wanna see, see maybe a little bit more homeownership than, than renting. Uh, like I said, waves of interest in development opportunities in Sunbury. Uh, the Greater Chico Land Business Development Council, uh, Bob Zimmerman invited us to meet with them, and that's gonna be later this week, we're meeting with the council commissioners, uh, Councilman Reese and I have met with them before, a few months ago, and we're gonna meet with them again, just to keep them, just to keep on visual with them, so they know what we're doing, what we're working on, and if there's anything they can do to support us, um, we can have their ear. And then a bike and pedestrian audit, we had a meeting the other month, um, and now I'm gonna meet with them again to get more specific about what I need to do in the next steps, I'm also gonna coordinate with our grant writer, hopefully he'll be able to come too and, uh, and know what exactly we need to do to pursue it.
That'd be the talk to the government, that'd be the one I want.
Department of Council Finance, Councilman Reifner, everything's going well, we've got the mercantile and property and personal tax revenues are starting to come in, um, we're gonna do the selection of the auditor, and then it's just really business as usual.
Well, I'd like to add one thing that Chris and I talked about tonight, we're in the process of finalizing, it's actually a statute, it's a state law, but we're going to enter our books, this is gonna help the taxpayers, help resumé the burden and get the legal taxes back into the city.
Excellent. Uh, Department of Public Safety, Councilman Reese, in the code administration office, they got new printer, copier, scanner devices that installed, and of course, you know, it takes a little time to work through the workflow, make sure it's all working smoothly. Um, we're gonna establish some new hours, eight AM to four PM, normally they're open until four-thirty. Um, there's end-of-day reports and, and things that need to be accomplished at the end of the day, so we're gonna give that thirty minutes of time for the employees to be able to finish that up before they go home at the end of the day. Um, did meet with emergency services, the America's Ambulance regarding the hospital closure impact, and the message is, they have not, uh, seen an impact so far, it's a little early to tell, so far it's all being, all the responses are being covered, they're not seeing any delays, but they're still monitoring the situation. Um, and looking ahead, uh, in the code office, partnering with county mapping, the G I S mapping to update the parcel ownership and data regularly, and that's way we sure, we have the ownership information that's up to date, um, and then we'll be doing that, updating and, um, that on a regular basis, like I say, every quarter. And then doing a review of the code administration policies and procedures, looking at updates, improvements, and employee training as needed. Uh, the end, the goal is to make sure that we have persistent enforcement, and we wanna streamline the processes so that we're using our time wisely. Department of Parks and Public Property, pool renovation project, we're moving on with getting the final designs and specs, and so hopefully we'll have those by next week and be getting bids in for that, um, that project construction. There's some water slide painting and repairs that are gonna take place, and looking ahead, of course, we're always looking ahead, the, the changeover from the winter sports to the summer sports, ice removal and opening of the playground and pool, and then, um, Carl Yoder mentioned to me that he's going to be organizing, we have a lot of events in town that use some of our, uh, equipment and supplies, we're just gonna create an area in the storage that has those things well organized, that's gonna be easier to get in and get them, use it for event, get them back and put them in so that, uh, they remain orderly. And then, um, the completion of the rig changing rooms, they did a great job all, through the winter, now that when they take the ice off and the temperature is, is good, they can do the painting and finishing touches on those. Streets and public, public improvements, Councilman Brocious, um, supervisor is Steve Welker, he's been working hard with his guys, his guys have been working hard, and he has been working hard also all winter long. Um, all, in fleet management, we've established a fleet management sort of program and tracking where all the DPW vehicles and equipment were looked at, serviced and repaired as needed, um, and then we wanna expand that, expand that fleet management across the organization so that we're all consistent, we're all keeping up with the maintenance of our, our, uh, vehicles and equipment. Um, the city garage has been cleaned up and organized, um, we had recently with the road, with the streets project, we had a construction season kickoff, um, and that's so that we can get PennDOT and other people that are working on our streets, the U G I, municipal authority, any other contractors, um, at the beginning of the construction season, so we're all on the same page about what's going on in time, meaning making sure that we don't conflict with each other, and then, um, making sure we all understand what's, what the standards are. The pruning of the trees on Market Street, looking great, are you guys almost done? Couple more blocks to go on the south side of Market Street, but it's looking really good, um, I think that should improve the appearance, uh, with the street lights and more visibility especially. And then looking ahead, there's some improvements in the garage, we're gonna do with installation of air and water lines, that's just to help with their, uh, processes and, um, functions in there, and then identifying, uh, extra equipment or outdated equipment that we could be, that could be sold at auction, and then upcoming will be some seasonal part-time hiring. So these are the streets projects that are coming up, um, the, PennDOT is planning to mill and pave the entire length of, uh, Reagan Street, um, we're gonna be doing front-to-forth with the big, other big project, but they'll be doing fourth to eleventh, but they have pushed that back to next year, so that's actually one less good, one less thing to have to worry about traffic-wise. And then the, our project, uh, city project with Reagan Street, front-to-four, that's the big flood mitigation project, um, we expect to maybe put some things out to bid on that project in March and then starting work later this summer. Um, the city's, uh, minor mill and pave projects that, uh, Steve Welker and the guys are gonna be doing, uh, and coordinating with the bids early in spring for summer work, and there will be more details to follow once we figure out, uh, exactly what projects are gonna get done this year. Then, uh, U G I is relocating a gas line on Reagan Street from front to second, we expect that to begin in mid-March. Um, G and R Charles, they're on Green Light Go, um, they've got the contract for doing those intersections at Fourth and Arch, Reagan and Packer, and they are actually starting this week. Um, Municipal Authority, they're also doing some work at those intersections, we're not exactly sure when they're gonna start, and then, um, the paving of Fourth Street from Market all the way out to Chicole Me Avenue and then down Chicole Le, Le Me Avenue to Front, that still isn't determined as far as a, a starting point on that, but it's this year.
May one.
Huh?
May one.
May first, alright. And then, just to be, so you're aware, it's not within the city, it's not our project, but I got a notification from PennDOT about resurfacing on Snyder Town Road, um, they're gonna put that project out for bid in July, so maybe later in the summer or fall that will get done.
I have a question for Steve, a question on the, on the Reagan Street and the other stuff, the main stuff, I, I'm assuming they're gonna be rerouting traffic, those are gonna, they're gonna close those streets while they're doing all the work?
On which project?
On the, the gas company, the U G I, that, uh...
U G I will not be retucking traffic under, they're gonna retire the gas main that's on Reagan Street, they're gonna put it back the alley behind, so that when we come through with our project, which will take closures, we're gonna break that up into five stages as we come down Reagan Street, starting at the four, going across Front, and working all the way down to Fourth.
Yeah, I get it.
Uh, so there will be closures involved there, we're gonna keep them in segmented areas.
Okay.
Uh, we do have a closure that's gonna be coming up, we're just getting approval for it right now, so it should be about two weeks from now, we're looking at doing a shutdown between, on Fourth Street from Packer Street up to Reagan Street is gonna be shut down, so we get all our water work done and all of our storm work done.
I, I'd just like to make a recommendation, it's put on our website or something?
It will be on the website, it will be on the Facebook page.
Steve has that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get all of it.
Yep. Alright.
Announcement, um, pub, there's a public meeting for street projects, it's going to be March twenty-sixth at six PM and April second at six PM, where is this located?
Right here.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll be right here, we do have a call with the Hart and Heritage on March twenty-sixth, if we can move down to the first floor conference room. So the, the public meetings for the streets project, so the one on, on March twenty-sixth will be, if you live on or have interest in Fourth Street between Arch and Lincoln, that's the meeting for you, if you are on Reagan Street or live on Reagan Street or have interest in Reagan Street from Front Street to Fourth, that public meeting will be April second.
Okay. Uh, next Sunbury New Year's Eve Celebration Meeting is April twenty-eighth at five PM in the first floor conference room downstairs. The next two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary committee meeting is March twenty-sixth at six PM in these council chambers, and then the next council meeting is March twenty-third, um, at six fifteen PM here, is there any, are there any audience comments at all? Ask you a question, you need me to sign it?
I love it, buddy. First of all, I have to thank Mr. Francis for the report he made in the newspaper, was about time, because for twelve years, you know, so, and I have to say another thing, Mr. Libera Loon called me about the five small stores over there behind Big Building. I don't know if he got any plans to do it or not, because for twelve years, we tried for the community colors, and so far, nothing, because city officials, county officials, state officials don't get together to do the things done, so, Mr. Mayor, call them, stick together and do something. So, Mr. Loon, anything to say?
City Council, it's delightful to sit in the audience and hear all of the synergies that are happening in Sunbury, because the twelve years that Mr. Panagoulis is referring to, it has been a, a tremendous transformation that we're seeing right before our eyes, and we know that it's because everyone is working very hard, and, uh, we'd just like to say, you know, it's possible, maybe with Mr. Panagoulis has offered to use some of that space in the back, uh, along Fourth Street, we have a couple of partners who would like to try and get their business into that space, um, maybe it would be possible to do that with, with your, maybe with your help on that, um, it would be helpful for me if I could work the city council on something like that. Mr. Panagoulis had made that offer that, that would be rent-free, so that's why I'm, I'm bringing up this, this discussion.
Um, so whatever you want to put in there, I'm gonna look in at Mike Rhodes, I think the place to start is with the code administration office and find out what the use is that you want for those properties, and then, and you start with that and the zoning and the permitted use, and then we'll, we'll see where you need to go from there.
Appreciate that very much.
And we are gonna start exploring with that LERTA as well, um, so we've been learning more about what a LERTA is and how, uh, local basically tax help, um, for new businesses, um, so we're gonna start exploring that, which might be able to tie right into what you're doing as well for people that are looking to make some major renovations of properties as well.
That's, that's exciting.
So, that's coming.
And I'll offer, as you're working with Mike Rhodes, he has my number, if you need legal advice pertaining to city things through that office, please feel free to call me.
Thank you so much.
So, we got the board of commissioners, and if you, I, I hear the news today on the radio, Mr. Casey was here in the, in the school, I don't know if you know the condition in Sunbury, how we want, so, we got it, and we got it, Paul Casey, Toomey, and Fred Keller, stick everybody together as Democrats and Republicans to make a new map for educational progress, think about the Sunbury, like the, him say, that's all I'm gonna say, let's take it twelve years, pray for my pocket, for my dream, I don't, I don't think my dream won't be nightmare, so, try to help. And like the United Way say, help the people and the poor, you got to do nice, nice, nice thing, but first of all, you got to teach the people how to cook and never be hungry, to help to feed the, the hungry, that's mean nothing if not teach them how to cook and be ready to eat. And, uh, Mr. Shipman, he knows the fight we have with twelve years, and the meeting, the first meeting I have with Jesse Wondro and the, and the office, you remember, Mr., okay? I'm not coming yesterday to tell my story, that's for twelve years, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Telly Savalas.
What are you, what are you laughing at, Herb Reynolds?
Is there any other audience comment tonight?
I just wanna say he's a good guy now, I find him liking him again, so.
Who loves him? Megan?
Yeah. I wanna make, uh, two brief comments, and one is just based on the synergy and the excitement that's happening in town, I don't think I've had a chance to mention this yet, but over the past couple of months, I've gotten a lot of inquiries, I think I'm up to sixteen inquiries for commercial units in the downtown Sunbury, which is off the charts, higher than anything I've ever seen, I've seen little bumps every once in a while, but this is really off the charts, um, excited, I'm hoping to be closing on a couple leases for downtown, a couple downtown, uh, businesses, and also I have two businesses that are hoping that are expanding, moving into larger units, so that's what we wanna see, them starting in smaller units and building their businesses, so, great to see that. Um, the one thing I've wanted to, um, mention to you, I know that, uh, might have been the last meeting or the one before, we had talked about, um, the police station and how, um, there are some plans and the works for the warehouse that were on Arch Street, um, and we didn't allow additional time, or I don't know if the recommend, it's sort of like there was a conversation, but there wasn't really a recommendation, I don't know if the council would consider an extra thirty days to allow people who are interested in providing plans for properties to get those in.
We gave till April first.
What was that?
We gave till April first, the last council meeting.
Right, but the, the conversation was, is that that might have been a little tight timeframe, could, would it be possible to add additional thirty days to that?
If, I mean, I haven't even reached out, there was one that was interested, but they haven't even heard anybody else, I wanted to speak.
Okay, well, I mean, I'm just saying, if, if it's a possibility, that, because it's a possibility.
Well, we have to keep this project rolling, so April first is the deadline that we came up with.
Okay, and, and I understand it's just such a long time span, a thirty days would allow someone to get that project thing, you know, can we, uh...
I, I have a question, just regarding, uh, this is, this is a what-if scenario, what if someone comes in with a better deal that we're curling on the table after April first, will we accept it, or just like, sorry, you didn't meet the deadline, not accepting? If it's, if it's a better deal for the overall well-being of the city and the park?
I would recommend that they identify themselves in the property before April first, and let the council to decide whether or not they want to extend the time for a very short amount of time in order for them to get the feasibility study done, but after, after we've considered everything that we know about, we, then, that's gotta be, that's, there has to be a point in time where you make a decision to move forward.
Right, and I'll bring that up because like, because there was some conversation of people concerned they couldn't make that deadline, so that's why I mentioned that. No one actually then said, you know, can we have an extra thirty days? So, then to see that.
Yeah, just comment was, yes, that's the person, okay.
Any other, uh, comments tonight?
Mayor, I just have one comment for the police department, um, starting this weekend, uh, we start our aggressive driver grant program, uh, the officer's gonna be out, including myself, going to be out looking for seatbelt violations, especially concentrating on the school areas, uh, so it's for the next like thirty days, like a month, so, just be careful out there, uh, spring's coming up, nice weather, so we're gonna be out, uh, checking for violations and make sure everybody's complying with the vehicle code, so.
Thank you for, for allowing me to speak again on this topic of, um, the, the police department, um, is an absolute critical infrastructure for a region of community and, and as you are going through this planning process, um...
And as you are going through this planning process, um, the Albright Center is the only location in Sunbury that has the adequate facilities to accommodate a large ceremony for commencement. So, when we're considering five hundred graduates, we need to have commencement parking for that, um, level of, um, audience. And so, I know that you have a, a location that you're considering, but I would ask, maybe you could look at other properties just as we look forward to, um, having, having those large groups coming into the city for this major event every year.
Doesn't the school, I mean, the school used to do the Gans graduation ceremonies. They would have, they had a full course of two, three, four hundred students at one point. So, if you're talking about a facility, that's another one that can hold it at least.
Between five, five hundred, a thousand students, if, an enrollment in this area would be at three thousand. If you're graduating, your graduating spots will be having that because it's two-year programs. So, it could conceive to be fifteen hundred students.
Y'all are capable of that.
And it, it could not, that's like, but we do know that phasing in, we are going to need a, a large commencement space. And that has the largest spaces of capacity.
And this is not getting facetious or anything, but at Chico, my commencement was at the football.
The auditorium seats eight hundred sixty-nine people.
Yeah, I suppose that means Albright would be the second one, at that point.
And, and you, I, I can see that, but when you're talking about an entirely, um, it, it just would be a, a good location downtown area, close to where all of the infrastructure is and all of this celebratory locations. Um, it just would make a good location, so, thank you.
Any other audience comment?
I was here, I guess it would have been almost a month ago. And I brought up the, the school, and I was curious that, um, you know, I'm willing to sit down and make a great deal for the city on that, that would be advantageous for the Edison School, but not even all the council members were told that I was even showing the school.
Yes, they did.
He said he wasn't.
I was not. You told me he made the offer, you never told me when the showing was. You just said he threw an offer on.
But, I don't, I'm not here to stir up stuff. I just want to look at this. As, if, you gotta look further down the line for the whole city, which is what I've been doing for twenty years on my improvements. And if we could come to a good term on the Edison School, even if we traded the warehouse, then I could take the warehouse, tear it down, add parking for the Albright building, which is right there. And, you know, the city would benefit a two-fold. You get a historic school that's Art Deco converted to a police station, which has, you can drive all four sides. If the train comes across the tracks, you can go under at Reagan and get to both sides of the city. If you just go and sit, it's been, I spent thirty minutes two times already at every location and the one way. But Albright, you're putting all this money in, and you need parking, and there's an adequate lot there that people could come right through and park. Get rid of that. So, I mean, I don't know if it's about the best proposal you're looking for, or is it about a quick proposal? And the reason I haven't moved forward on, I could still spend my fifty-eight hundred, which no one else has done except for me, which I'm the only one with the exception of Woodbury who got twenty-five hundred, but I don't mind about the money. But in the paper after I came to the meeting, here's the quote which kind of gave me a sour taste. "The time for good ideas has passed." Well, I've been here twenty-seven years, put my money behind everything, and for a quote to come out in the paper, which you quoted, that the time for good ideas has passed, then I don't think you got, you know, you're the right person to, to just, you know, if you take thirty days more and really do a feasibility on it. And no one even came to me, not one person on this council came to me, asked me to sit down what kind of proposal I was willing to make. Not one person. You never called me. No one said, "What's your very best deal?" So.
Mark, did you get that mean?
Yeah, but you said that was off the record. That's what you told me. I'm not gonna argue with you, but that's what you said.
You're right, Mark.
I will say too. It was.
The reason why, when we asked you to spend that money, when I told you two years ago about your property, you told me you weren't interested.
That's because you told me that you were looking at possibly restoring, believe me, I remember the quote, on Market Street.
Now, was one of the options, and you said, "I shouldn't leave market, so don't even consider my building."
That's right, because you said you, I'd say I'd rather prefer it to be restored. Okay, so now you're past that, it's a new situation. But all I'm trying to say is look down the road fifteen years. If you get a parking lot where the old city warehouse business, if, if I could make a trade and even lose money, I don't care. The point is, you get a better building and a, and a more, there's visibility, security cameras can go on all four sides. No one's gonna sneak up on you for it. The building needs to be rehabbed, I agree, but you got it out for rehab. But my point is, you don't have to put up extra money. We can make some kind of deal, we'll have a meeting, I'll give you my best proposal, or you counter proposal. And then, if I trade for that building, then I go over here to the Albrights, which is a nonprofit, and we work with them and get a parking lot, which is right across the street from where we're putting all the other money. It's a win-win, you know, so I just don't want, you know, I think you gotta just, you know, thirty days, we got two options. I mean, both buildings need work. Woodbury's building is nice, but I don't know that with all the windows, it's one-way, if there's a train, you only can leave with, on the alley. You can only leave the other building off the back on alleys. So, our, here's our new police department for thirty years, it's right on the street, hidden on a side street, and no visibility versus a big area, public parking, private parking, visibility on all four sides. You know, I'm just, I don't wanna spend money on deaf ears. I'm happy to go get the thing done, I'm happy to pay with my own money. I'm happy to lose money to make the city better.
So, what do you want, though? Do you want us to, you wanna tell us what your best deal is?
Well, here's, here's the whole thing. I bring a proposal, I talk, I did talk to him off the record about it, and, and.
You talked to me too, you said a trade.
Yeah, I said a trade, but when someone comes to me with. Well, no, nobody asked, I mean, I, I, but the point is, I do deals every day for lots of money. And you call them up, you say, "Well, what, what's your real bottom line? What are you willing to do?" But no one called me here to ask me that.
Again, I thought trade was the best deal, I mean, that, how do you?
Well, when I negotiate, I say, "Well, is that the best deal?" And then, I, you know, I didn't say no, I said a possibility is a trade. I'm trying to get the city into the best property for the cheapest amount of money and benefit another property. I'm not looking to make money on my building, I'm looking to have a nice big police station.
Do you wanna pay down the warehouse if we don't build that?
Do what?
Do you wanna pay that down at the warehouse, or just give it to you if we don't build that?
Do what?
If we don't.
Trade the warehouse for that?
No, 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 if we, if you are willing to lose money on it, if we end up going to Arch Street, we can give you the warehouse and you'll pay to tear it down to benefit the city.
No, because if you give it to me, hear me out, don't, hey, don't watch, you don't know. I'll talk to these people right here with the Albrights, because the city will be out, it'll be mine. And I'll negotiate a nice, wonderful deal for them to get a parking lot.
So, you'd sell it to them instead of us, instead of us?
For a discounted price. Well, let me ask you, are you giving away anything?
We don't know. We haven't.
All I'm trying to say is, let's just throw a number out there. What if I say, I trade you the, the school even money for the warehouse? Okay?
That's what it was before.
And the appraisal, but hear me out, the appraisal of, because I'll, I'll end up, okay, then I go to them and I say, "What can you get to pay for this building?" Let's say it's fifty thousand, okay, so I'm, I'm in my building now with expenses, everything maybe a hundred eighty thousand. So, fine, I go, "Fine, fifty thousand, I'll take it." So, now you cleared out one building, got a new police station location, it's bigger with more parking, and.
I would tell you the same thing we told you last time, we talked about it, we need the feasibility study.
But, but, that's fine, I'm happy to do it, but I don't see the interest coming from anybody. So, just for me to spend my own money, I mean, if you're serious. Yeah, I mean, from you, I have.
Sure.
But I haven't seen that much interest coming from anybody. And the way the city works, I mean, it might be changing, and I hope it gets tighter, but for years, everything's the slow grind. But if we bought, whatever you decide on for a police station, believe me, fifty years from now, it's gonna be the same location, and it's gonna be needing to be at a facelift. So, you might as well pick the very best, biggest, substantial location, because the county used the prison for a hundred and forty-three years. That tells you how quick stuff moves, you know? So, I'm just saying, I, I, I'll, I would be more than happy to go ahead and get the proposal, but if I spend money, I want a serious, you guys to serious compare traffic patterns, parking spaces for parking spaces, building structure, uh, long-term stability.
That's what the feasibility study would do.
Yeah, but the feasibility study, which you've been getting, I, I looked at one, and all it is, is can you put this stuff inside that building?
That's phase one, step one.
Right.
Yeah, then there's step, up to step four. So, we just got back the other one, right? And now what we can do is actually sit down and compare both options.
But is, is it more about the feasibility, or is it about the money?
About all of them.
Okay, so my point being, I think common sense would tell you, a location with two-way, if a police car comes out with a stopper on and can go either way and get under the railroad tracks at Reagan is a better location than one that comes down Arch Street and gets stopped by a train, or down Chestnut Street. Or you have to speed out down an alley to get either other direction, so.
And I think those are all things that the whole council would consider. After we have a feasibility study that says this building is suitable, this building could fit the things that we need to it, to have in it according to our space requirements that we kind of went to the trouble of defining out.
Right.
So, so, you know, so. I understand what you're saying, so the, but I think we're going back to, it, it comes to the feasibility study. And then, once we have the feasibility studies from each of the properties, and we can consider, well, this one has these things going for it, whether it's a one-way street, or not as, not as much parking, or this one has these other features in addition to what's, what's, what's in that, you know, parameters of the feasibility study. And those will be of, all the other things that I would think.
So, can I just ask each, each council member, and then I'll be done? Or would you be interested if I determined a feasibility study to compare it seriously?
Oh, okay, well, no guarantees, that's your problem.
I'm not looking for a guarantee.
Oh, yes, you are, that's the problem.
Oh, no.
I mean, we, last meeting, we went through the same thing, am I right, Chris? You want, you want guarantees, we can't give you the guarantee.
I just wanna guarantee that you'll, that you'll compare.
That's not off the record, that's on the record.
Well, you know, they want me to tell you what you said, called me.
Don't sit there shaking your head.
No, but you say off the record, and, and, you know, you come and meet with me, and we have a discussion, and that's how I kept.
Okay.
That's what you told me.
If you, if you do your feasibility, feasibility study or whatever, and if you're willing, you go for a.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do it.
I'll give it, I'll give it.
Oh, I want some fair shake. I'm not saying, I'm not saying you gotta take it, I don't care. I just want a fair playing field, that's it. You can say no, doesn't matter, but at least I know that I, I did my best and I got the best report I can. And in the end, you can get rid of two things, you can have a new location and parking, so you can, that's, that helps. But fine, I'll, I'll, so the reason that I asked for the extra time was, is because after I read in the paper, I scolded him back. I had hired him already, and after you said the time for a good deal is past, or whatever it is to quote, I said, "Well, why should I go spend?"
No, 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 that was not to exclude you from putting in your feasibility study. That was during a discussion during the council meeting where, okay, all of a sudden now all these ideas are pa, are popping up. And what I actually said, "There comes a time, there comes," I know how it's quoted in there. But my full sentence was, "There comes a time when the time for good ideas has passed." And, and we're approaching that now, right?
I understand, but.
We heard, we heard, listen to me.
Yeah.
We heard about the condition of this police department right now. When were you on council?
Years back, and I voted to put my, and I voted to put my in there.
Right, so, so you've been a part, and you say it's a slow grind, it's a slow grind. There is a time when you have to say, there's a sense of urgency.
I understand that.
This decision has to be made, and that's where we're at. So, you get in your feasibility study.
Okay.
And so, we can consider all of those things on equal ground, where the points that you have made with, you know, the trade and possibility for parking, those are all that they can consider, yeah.
But, but, you know, as far as when I was on council, I voted to have the wall put up for the police department when the people outside could have shot the policeman walking around. That temporary wall, you can pull the minutes if you'd like to, I've always been a staunch.
Yeah, too bad we didn't find a building though in the last fifteen years.
I think you'd still have time, would, would you, by extending the deadline, if you're gonna move forward the process, I still think you'd have time to be that mark, or that April first.
That's fine, I just, you know, I, I like to see something good happen, I just wanna make sure that it gets looked at closely.
And I'll look at your feasibility study, open eyes with.
Yeah, it's fine, if you wanna say doesn't work, or it's not the right one, that's all, that's fine, as long as you compare, compare. All right, thank you.
All feasibility studies and architectural designs, whatever we receive for each of the property, will be made available to the general public for review before any final decision is made on any property.
Wow, we should have open, uh, meeting, to discuss options side by side, whatever's turned in.
That way, everybody has a review and has a, a, a chance to comment on all properties that the city has received the entire feasibility study.
I, I don't know if it was not, but there should be a committee established again to deal with this.
That'd be us.
You're saying it's gonna be council?
Yeah, because we basically, now it's time to take the, all, all the options.
We do it with that official meeting, we cannot do what we did before. We could not sit down and have.
We can have work sessions.
I wanna say something. Mark, I want you to, I wanna say something to you, and I didn't jump in when everybody else was talking, okay?
Sure.
All crap aside, legally, we, this council, upon my recommendation, must give everyone the same consideration. Okay?
No, I understand that.
It's gotta be fair. Well, I'm telling you, if you wanna spend your money and put a, and I'm not trying to point my finger at you, but if you wanna spend money and put, and put your building in the mix, you have my word that I'll tell them and try to ensure that everybody gets a fair shake. That's not to say your building's gonna win.
No, I agree a hundred percent.
It's not to say, I mean, I don't know what condition it's in, I know where it sits, that's what I know. But my point is, and I don't have a vote, but what I'm telling you is, I don't think anybody in this council is going to short your building just because you're the last one to get a feasibility study in.
Okay, so that's fine, I, I'm gonna do it.
Well, no, I'm, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to reinforce that you'll get a fair shake.
Yeah, I just want the city to move forward like everyone else does. And I see these steps that are like highly important steps, like this is a big one, okay? Because, so this is probably the most important thing for the citizens, a good police department, you gotta have it. I'm a backer of the police, so the best location, the, the overall finest, a nice signage, all that helps people that come to Sunbury, we're safe here, you can see them, you know, and, uh, that's, you know, I, I'm a hundred percent behind it. I want, I want them to have the best, I mean, I had a brief police at one of my buildings years ago, and we gave out helmets and bicycles. That's another thing that people could do, have open house, meet the police, kids will come, shake their hand. And it gets the citizens, we gave out, uh, actually, one of the police officer's kids did the raffle and won the bicycle, which was pretty good. But, you know, I've, I've been always behind, you know, so that's fine, I'll, I'll get it done, it's just, I, I guess I interpreted the newspaper article the way I've read it, that it was like, you know, time is over. Maybe I misinterpreted, I'll say.
Well, I think there was a, I think earlier tonight, you, you heard them, and I know you're an intelligent guy, you sat here and heard them say, "If we get notification from a property owner that they're gonna submit a feasibility study that they can't get into this by April first, it will be considered." I think we're safe in saying that you've given us notification of your interest.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get right on it. I've already given them the partial plan, so thank you.
You don't understand what I'm saying.
No, I appreciate it. I just want the city to prosper.
Sure, we all do.
I mean, I could, I, I've been here buying stuff for years, like everybody else has, and we all wanna see it go up. Lots of things have improved, the waterfront, Front Street looks great. You know, there's, there's lots of assets that have happened downtown, I agree, we got the small clubs, you know, there's lots of good stuff and the momentum, but each decision, like, if you use the warehouse for that, then what happened to the money they're putting in the Albright for parking? You gotta kind of look at, at the biggest picture. You gotta kind of look at, at the biggest picture you can and accomplish the most each move because it's not a one-year move, it's a, I, I put an ad in the paper in the year two thousand, a big ad about how to bring, restore the old buildings and take old buildings, new uses. And I ran it for days in there. And it was the, the Ses, the jewel on the Sesquahanna. And I had like turn old buildings into new building, you know? It was a big ad I ran. And that's been twenty years ago. Since that twenty years, I've bought maybe twenty-two properties and done the best I can and waiting to do others. But my point is, I'm behind the cause to get Sunbury up and, you know, beautiful for sure.
I think everybody on the council agrees that you are and they are. So, not, not everybody has to agree on everything, but I think we all agree that everybody here wants the best for Sunbury.
Yeah, that's it.
And that's what we're gonna get.
Okay, thanks. You gotta keep in mind too, we don't have an open checkbook, you know? We already have so much money we gotta watch, so we gotta make sure we get the best buy and the best bang for the buck.
Any other audience comment tonight? All right, this is me, now, I'll adjourn, thank y'all for coming.